Councilmember Ward and Mayor Brown.
Here.
Mayor, could I, point of order, ask to have oral communications? Either we have two of them or bring the one that's on the agenda at the end of the meeting brought forward.
Why don't we do the following? Let's split it in two, shall we?
Perfect.
Fifteen minutes at the beginning, fifteen minutes at the end.
Bingo.
Okay, great.
That would be my motion.
Let's go ahead and I'll second that. And so, motion by Don Chex, second by Brown, all is in favor. I passes three zero. And we'll have fifteen minutes for oral communication, which will allow for five speakers. Gary Hedrick first, following Gary is Gene Stone.
Good afternoon. Thank you for making this accommodation for us. The topic I wanted to address is maybe indirectly related to the long-term financial planning, but it has more specifically to do with the funding that we get from Edison so that we do have an adequate emergency plan in place if anything should happen at San Onofre. So, I first want to acknowledge that today happens to be the seventh anniversary of Fukushima, which really brings to mind the suffering that continues there and ongoing radiation into the environment where there are billions of dollars spent and billions to go and we've just, you know, it's another reminder, we don't want to end up in that position. And that emergency planning is great, but the best possibility is to prevent an accident from happening in the first place. So, we would like to suggest that we have more input on how the emergency funding is spent. I understand that thirty thousand dollars of the hundred ninety-three thousand was allocated by Edison for such purposes was not used. And there's other ways we could use that funding, either for more independent nuclear experts to advise us on things like metallurgy and how long those canisters will last, what should we do if there's a crack? Because Edison tends to speak only in terms of probability and saying that it's just such a low possibility that something would happen, they don't need to consider it. Well, we think we should be prepared for the worst and understand from other experts, get their input as well. You know, we're also stuck in this town without a hospital and we should have a hospital that could address radiological emergencies. And we, there's other ways that we can use that money. And then, I was very disappointed in an email I got today from Stephen Foster, our emergency planner, saying that it looks like Edison wants to reduce the amount of payments that would protect us in the event of an emergency. So, I don't know where this fits into the long-term planning exactly, but it seemed like a relevant topic I wanted to bring up and share with you and see what we could do to make sure we have adequate funding and that we use that funding to the best of its ability. You know, I'm just throwing out a few suggestions, I'm sure there's more. You know, we'd like to get live, real-time radiation monitoring of the plant and other things, but that's, that's what I had to say and I appreciate you listening. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gene Stone.
Thank you for accommodating us early. Rose is working with a couple of other environmental groups and we will be presenting a plan to Edison for real-time, live, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five radiation monitoring. We, I met with the owner or the CEO of SafeCast last Thursday. They've donated a piece of equipment to us that can be driven around, it can be put stationary, but it monitors twenty-four-seven and it transmits publicly on the decommissioned San Onofre website and the SafeCast website all the time so that any, if anything happens at San Onofre, we'll be able to see it immediately for whoever's looking at that point in time. It also has an emergency system set up with it as well, so notifications can be enabled to go out. So, on the March twenty-second CEP meeting, I will be presenting this monitor to California Edison, asking them to put it on the ISBUS pad. I would appreciate your support at that upcoming CEP meeting because I believe the city, all the city officials should be, in my opinion, standing up for defense and depth. When I was on the CEP meeting for the first year, committee for the first year, I harped on defense and depth. The whole nuclear field is built on defense and depth, except the decommissioning process and the storage of nuclear waste. Edison has never made their information publicly and somehow after Fukushima went down or happened, the federal radiation monitoring system was no longer accessible for several months. So, we believe that instead of having this information hidden by corporations and government agencies, it ought to be public. So, I look for your support in asking Edison to put this radiation monitor by SafeCast, who if you look them up are the, approved by the IAEA and the NNDC, which are the two big monitoring. Thank you. Apologize for going over.
That's fine, Gene. We spent meetings talking about defense and depth. For you to say that it was never even addressed, I'm not sure what meetings you attended, but I was there too and it came up early and often with an entire meeting dedicated. I know you brought it up, so did about the whole of the panel at different points. So, are you, are you going to stand by that or?
Yes, I am. And if you want to give me a moment to reply to that?
I'll give you thirty seconds, yeah.
Okay. Defense and depth for having a nuclear waste dump would be having a fuel pool and/or a hot box and the third option is to have a movable, transportable cast that you, you can slip leaking cast into. We have none of those.
So, it's defense and depth according to your definitions, but not according to the rest of the definitions provided?
Well.
To say it was ignored completely would be not true.
Defense and depth is, for me.
According to what you believe.
Is something that actually does something.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Johnson, it's the last card during this time.
That was fast. Thank you. I'm going to read something very quickly here. For the foreseeable future, San Clemente has a new budget burden. I guess we're talking about budgets here. And that's a realistic preparation for our radiation disaster in our area. We already have emergency planning, but a conventional emergence for conventional emergencies, but not for radiation, which are entirely different. So, we know that the nuclear waste dump is now being loaded, it may be here for decades, possibly centuries. There's all kinds of things that can go wrong. This requires a new kind of planning. So, I'd like you to consider this in your budget deliberations. We get money from Edison and I would like to see that this money be used widely and some of the priorities should include radiation monitoring. There is no onsite, real-time radiation monitoring available to the public and we should have that. We should also have literature distributed to the public and an effort to discuss radioactive contamination and its health and consequences. This preamble is, I wanted to mention that there has been a petition circulated by a hundred and fifty-five residents and this has gone to the CEP and it will be discussed at the next meeting. And it's particularly asked the CEP to hold a special meeting, hold it in San Clemente and it will be on two topics. One is external threats to the nuclear waste dump. We're not talking about canister leaks and things like that, we're talking about external threats, either natural or, or things like terrorism. The second would be disaster planning in the event that there is such a radioactive contamination fallout. So, they have not discussed this in any CEP meetings, either one of these. And so, we'd like it to have discussed. So, I, there's a document here, it's about ten pages long and I'd like to, if it could be circulated, I don't have the means to copy it and I would like to give it to whoever to circulate it. This contains some documentation about a Sandia National Lab study about dangers and threats to storage facilities. There's one copy there. So, the Sandia National Labs wrote a long, extensive report on all the possible things that can go wrong at a nuclear waste facility, not just operating reactors, but ones that are, the ones that are storage facilities. So, there's numerous points made in there which are, which are worth knowing. These things have been studied and we're in a whole new world now and so we have to prepare for it, we have to educate the public and so I hope you'll allocate some funds for this. Thank you.
Thanks. Roger, I'm sure you remember, but just so you remember, I remember this meeting, it was on July twenty-third, we had emergency planning preparedness discussion. And then we had a presentation in October of two thousand fourteen on emergency planning preparedness. I'll have to go back and review those again, just on the details, but for those who are interested, we had full CEP meetings on both of those items, those points.
May I answer?
I'm just mentioning, the videos are available.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's true. I was at that meeting.
I was at both.
But there was no, no extensive discussion of missiles and bombs, truck bombs and offshore missiles and cargo ships and things like that. There are studies of that. There's been no discussion of these kinds of things at all.
There has been extended discussion on terrorist threats, aerial threats.
I think, um, well, I'd like to see that if there was.
Just reread the tape.
But I looked at the last agendas, I didn't see it.
It's been a while, I forgot about them too.
But it's pretty complicated and I think it might have been mentioned, but not. So, please read the Sandia National Lab study.
Fair enough. All right, thank you. Let's go and proceed. So, we're going to have public comment at the tail end of the meeting for fifteen minutes, five speakers as well.
Before, before we go on, I'd just like the staff to clarify one thing because I've heard the same comment that Gary made this evening, which is we haven't spent all of our emergency funding money. So, staff, could you just answer that for me?
The money that we receive from Edison is committed to fund Stephen Foster and we also use the excess for training supplies related to emergency planning, so there's no money left on the table.
Did we send money back last year?
No.
Okay.
Ready to go?
First item on the agenda is new business twenty eighteen long-term financial plan, report from the Assistant City Manager concerning the two thousand eighteen long-term financial plan.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Sund, Assistant City Manager with the City of San Clemente and as many of you have been anxiously waiting for this annual long-term financial plan, it's before you tonight or it's this afternoon. So, I'm going to just do a brief introduction. So, the long-term financial plan, a plan that identifies fiscal issues, challenges and opportunity. It also establishes fiscal policies and goals, examines fiscal trends, establishes reserve policies, provides focus on long-term initiatives and produces a financial plan. This LTFP is a critical, critical document to reinforce the city's triple-A bond rating that we've maintained for many, many years. And, you know, we always have kind of a message and I think this year, as we approach the next fiscal year, eighteen, nineteen, this message that I have at the bottom is really going to resonate. The long-term approach to preserving the city for another ninety years. So, some of the previous long-term financial plans have been, you know, putting away money today for the future tomorrow or dealing with deferred maintenance from a reserve standpoint. All of these approaches that the council has taken over the last four years have put us in a good position as we see, you know, looming deficits in the future years. So, again, the goal for us is to maintain and preserve the city with the infrastructure and the services that we've become accustomed to. Lay there, hold on. Hit or miss. Very hit or miss. Okay, so the papers that we have in the two thousand and eighteen LTFP, we have the financial trends, the financial forecast, the reserve analysis, the fiscal policy, capital project analysis, and then we'll bring back the information technology strategic plan. Seven big themes that I want to talk about before we jump into it. So, the number one is the general fund operating position. As I've mentioned before, our annual goal is to have at least one million dollars and as you'll see in today's presentation, we're landing at about a million point two. Also, it's important that we have the operating position to help fund capital and one-time items in the future, provide a financial foundation for future downturns. This is really important and I want to highlight this because we've been holding these monies and building a reserve specifically knowing that in the future fiscal years, we see a deficit, so it puts us in a good position to address those deficits without seeing negative impacts to the city, i.e. cuts, et cetera. Obviously, very small or negative operating position over the remaining four years. Public safety costs continue to increase, so as you'll see, the Orange County Sheriff's Department projected an increase as their first estimate for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen at four point seven percent. We are doing four percent for the later years in this five-year forecast. OCFA is projecting four point five, their contractual cap, and we are also forecasting that over the next four to five years in part of this forecast. Another cost implication is if you recall, we went ahead and agreed to adding a fourth firefighter to be phased in over eight years. One of the things that you'll see, as Judy does the presentation later on, those costs that are amortized over eight years, we're starting, we'll start to see those impacts in the future years that also contribute to our deficit. Pension contributions are increasing. It's important, you'll see a couple of different elements that we'll discuss, pension costs and what we're looking to do in the future. Just for a little bit of revisiting history, the city has four different pension plans. Costs are increasing for all and the public safety contracts, i.e. fire and police, are also impacted from pension contributions as well. Legal costs continue to increase, so we've seen increased legal costs and we expect those to continue. The city is involved in a number of ongoing lawsuits and just to give you a kind of a brief snapshot of where we were at with litigation, litigation separate from general counsel, litigation for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen was at about one point two million dollars and fiscal year to date for seventeen, eighteen, we're at about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure is roughly up to January of eighteen, so we still have some more months to attribute to that. Some revenue sources are on the decline, so TOT revenue and related business licensing revenue is decreasing. One of the things we'll highlight is the loss of rental income with negocio buildings since we're moving in there. These are all things that we're just pointing out to the council, it's not an issue, but we want them to be, want you to be aware. The Beaches Park and Recreation waivers and partnership agreements, this is something that we're starting to track now that we have our new class registration system that allows us to do so. I think it's going to be important in the future that we let the council know, these waivers and these partnership agreements, while they provide a service to the city, they add up in costs that hurt us negatively. And then also ambulance reimbursements for Medicare and Medicaid are stagnant. While the county has raised their ambulance rates for recovery, what we're finding on the Medicare and Medicaid is they're only going to pay one amount regardless of what our rates are. So, we're not really seeing the revenue that we had hoped for with those increase in ambulance rates. Funding infrastructure maintenance and reserves, and as I highlighted earlier, when times were tough, we didn't really focus on our infrastructure maintenance and reserves because we needed it for the general fund. We've, of course, corrected that, but again, now we're seeing, you know, as we look into deficit years, this investment we need to continue to focus on affects our ability from, from an operating position as well. Again, maintenance and replacement of facilities and parks has been deferred, continuing process to identify assets and determine funding needs and a need to fund reserves, reserves for long-term sustainability. And then last, capital projects require funding. While we have a larger operating position that does provide funding, funding for future capital projects, we have to be conservative and nimble with that money as well as we have many projects that equate to a lot of need and funding and staff resources, that's a problem and it's difficult. The Beaches Park and Recreation Master Plan, that'll be coming before you in the March twentieth meeting, one of the goals with that master plan was to identify what's in front of us now that's been deferred, that needs to be addressed in terms of a current infrastructure. I'll give you a little sneak peek, the price tag that that's coming with is about five million dollars over a phased-in approach for our existing park infrastructure, so that'll be something that we also have to factor in.
What does that number mean? That's the annual operating number?
No, that's, that's overall, you have five million dollars in things you need to fix.
So, that's deferred maintenance?
Deferred maintenance, exactly. Whether it's picnic tables, you know, tennis courts, bathrooms, et cetera. So, one of the things for the master plan, once it lands and council provides direction and approval, we then have to integrate those wants into our lucidity CMMS system and start prioritizing the highest risk from the lowest risk and the highest risk obviously getting addressed from a funding perspective going forward.
So, a quick question, we're going to be at that time before we start the capital improvements, you know, planning for the maintenance, we're going to be taking out some of those that we aren't going to be using anymore, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Then also, we have the general plan that does dictate capital projects as well as the information technology strategic plan. And so, while these are all important and very critical to city operations, we have to be cautious in how we plan them and how we address them from a funding perspective. And so, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Judy to provide a little overview on the trend analysis.
Thank you, Eric. So, the reason we're going to talk about the trend analysis for just a second is before we really do a forecast and look forward, we like to take a chance and look back and see what trends we have. And we do this so we make sure that we're watching certain items if needed. So, we look back and see if there's anything that's kind of standing out to us in terms of the trends that we're seeing. And so, in this case, I'm going to have the same problem with the clicker, huh? It's a little slow. So, I'm going to show you this, on page thirty-two in your book, there's a much more deeper chart about this and there's a lot more information on each of these trends, but I think the important thing here to note is this is from nineteen ninety-four until the present and you can see that the last three years on the negative side, we don't have any warning or negative unfavorable trends. So, that's, that's a good thing. On the positive side, we do have three that are favorable, but it's a caution and all that means is just take a look at them. And so, one of them happens to be capital projects and that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a bad thing, it's just that if it's changing dramatically, there's a note for us to take a look at that. So, I just want to mention to you that you do have that trend analysis in your book and if you want to look at that further, there's a whole section on that. So, then I want to just move into looking at the forecast. So, I don't know if we need to batteries on this thing or what? There we go, okay. So, I'm going to look at the forecast. So, Eric just kind of talked about the big themes, but basically, you know, what does the forecast tell us overall? There's a lot of information in there, so what are the big things? And so, we have a projected negative operating position the last three years of the forecast and the first year's positive, the second year, it's a basically zero. So, the last four years are a concern and we do have to make adjustments to ensure that those are not negative. We do see the property tax and sales tax revenues continue to rise, which is a great thing for us because those are our two major revenue sources and so seeing those rise is important. But we're seeing TOT and rental revenues decreasing. So, the TOT from our SLU vacation rentals, we've made some policy changes and so we know that some of that rent, that revenue is going to be decreasing because of that. We're also seeing some of our cell towers and that type of thing not grow as robustly as we have before. We are seeing on the expenditure side that our contracted expenditures, public safety, pension, et cetera, considered, continue to exceed our projected revenue and we're looking at about a three point five million unassigned fund balance at the end of the next fiscal year based on the forecast. However, that's, all will change over the next year and a half, but that's where we're at at this point. And that's before any capital improvement program costs. So, that being said, let's look at some of the numbers here. So, the important thing here is that the operating revenues, two point eight percent annual increase is what we're forecasting over the five-year period. So, that's an average increase on the operating revenues and that becomes important when you look at the slide when we talk about expenditures. So, we'll come back to that. The two major revenue sources, property tax and sales tax, you can see there that property tax is fifty-two percent of our general fund operating revenues and sales tax at sixteen. So, between those two, it's at sixty-eight, almost seventy percent of all of our revenues come from those two sources. Property tax continues to increase, four point three percent we're seeing in next year, we expect, and then about, close to four percent for the remaining four years. Sales tax going up two point four percent. It's important here, I want to note that we aren't including any revenue for additional stores, restaurants at the outlet mall and that's been our pattern over the last several years. You know, there should be more things opening there, but we just don't know when that's going to happen, so rather than assume that, we just don't make any assumptions. And then about a two percent increase in sales tax over the remaining four years of the forecast.
But I will say, there's some good news. Home Goods just pulled a business license today with the city, so Home Goods will be opening soon and that not only will be a great place to shop, but a good sales tax revenue generator as well.
How much is the case?
I'm just, it's just about the sales tax.
You had your reservation in line, yeah?
I know. You, I, you wouldn't want to send me to a.
Extra twenty cents, check a few months.
Just, yeah, just enter Eric and the promo code.
Yeah, and we also have not included that Home Goods as well, again, not knowing when it was going to open, the permit was pulled today, so we may include that in the budget when we get there. Okay, so operating expenditures, remember I showed you the revenues, two point eight, operating expenditures are growing at three point eight. So, you can see the structural difference there and the changes that we have to make. So, I want to just talk about our biggest expenditure components and so salaries and benefits are about thirty percent of our operating expenditures. So, we forecast our positions based on our current positions, we may add them with the budget if that comes up, but right now in the forecast, there's no new positions. And if you remember, we have a three-year MOU in place and so this is nothing new, we know what our numbers are for next year, we'll be in year two of that agreement. So, a three point one percent increase in wages and a small increase in health insurance for employees, but coming back to the city, employees will be paying one point one percent additional of their pension costs each of those three years. So, that helps the wages go up, but our benefit costs go down based on this. And then by the end of this three-year contract, we'll have full pickup of the employees' pension portion by the employees. So, our pension plan, so Eric talked about this a little at the beginning and I had a bunch of slides in here, but it got, it gets very complicated. So, my goal of this, there's only two slides and I just want you to understand that there's a lot of things going on. I think that's what I want you to understand. So, basically, first of all, we have four different pension plans. Our miscellaneous general employees, we have our legacy plan, that empower plan was, used to be Great West and that's before we went to CalPERS, so employees who retired or inactive or still in that plan, four years, two thousand thirteen?
It's crazy, it's been four years already.
I know, right?
They go.
I know. Then we have our safety lifeguard plan for our marine safety employees and then we have another plan, a safety plan, which were our police and fire employees from way back when before we transitioned to contracts. And so, we still have a pension obligation to those members when they retire or if they have retired, to pay those pensions. So, four plans. And then the next thing that's going on is in each of those plans, we have some changes coming up. There we go. Okay. So, here's four different things that are happening with pensions. Okay, so the first thing is, in the prior years, we've had loss, investment losses and we've had assumption changes. And so, CalPERS phases those changes in over time, so rather than all hitting at once, they hit over time. Good news, bad news. Good news that you don't have to take the hit all at once, but the bad news is you keep seeing those increases even though the loss or the change was five years ago. The next thing that's happened, last year, CalPERS decided that the discount rate wasn't exactly matching what the investment returns are expected to be. And so, they have a three-year plan to lower that rate and basically, that's a lot of, you know, it sounds confusing, all it is, is what do they assume we're going to make on investments over the next twenty to thirty years? And if you think about it, if you assume you're going to make seven and a half percent, well, you'd need less money now to meet a goal in the future. If you're going to make less in your investment interest, you're going to need more money in order to meet the same goal in the future. So, what's happening there is they lower that rate, our contributions need to go up to be able to meet our obligation on the pension side. So, that's happening in CalPERS and then in our legacy plan, we're also seeing that same type of reduction, about a one percent reduction based on what the returns have been and the investment mix. The third thing you'll see here is new actuarial assumptions and what, that's a big word, that just means that every few years, CalPERS looks at mortality rates, when do people retire, how long do they live, and then they make changes because if people live longer or they retire earlier, there may be more money that we have to fund for those retirements. And so, CalPERS will make those changes which, when they have longer lives and that type of thing, that means more, more contribution that we need to put in. So, that impact begins in nineteen twenty, so a year from now. The last thing on here, this just came out, we just got a letter about this, I think a couple of weeks ago, that CalPERS is reducing the amortization period from thirty years to twenty years for these losses and these assumption changes. Again, sounds complicated, but we all, many of us have mortgages and we understand when you pay a thirty-year mortgage, your payment's lower than when you pay a twenty-year mortgage. So, it's good news in the long run because we'll pay less in in interest, just like you would with a twenty-year mortgage, but you got to come up with that money earlier than you would by spreading it over thirty years. So, all of those things are going on with all of those plans that I showed you, so it's very hard to get your arms around, what are all these increases coming? We've done a fair job of it, but as we get into this more, we'll learn more about it. We've done a fair job of it, but as we get into this more, we'll learn more about this as we go over each of the next years. And so, I guess my point is to just let you know that these costs are going up, and we have to be diligent in terms of addressing them. So, a couple of things we've done to address pension increases. I lied, I said two slides, really, three. The pepper rules were changed a few years ago, and that was a state change. And so, that means new employees coming in who've never been in the pension system will, it's a lower contribution cost, and they have a lower benefit than employees who've been in the system. So, over time, that mix will change and mean less pension costs for the city. The MOU changes that I mentioned a little while ago, that council has implemented over the last several years, has helped because those MOU changes have reduced the city's costs for pension. We've made some payments in prior years, and we've restructured the safety lifeguard unfunded liability, and that's actually been able to save us money. You might remember about four years ago, we took five-hundred thousand that we had set aside, and we paid down some of that liability. We've been prepaying our contributions and making additional payments, as long as it's within the budget, we're allowed. And then we're also currently reviewing some options for additional one-time payments or restructuring for maybe a pension stabilization set aside or for a Section 115 trust. So, those are all options. We're not ready to come forward with those to council yet, but we are looking at them to see if there's a way we can address these increases and make the city more financially stable by addressing them in one of those ways.
And I think it's important to note, one of the things that obviously myself and the finance team are looking at is how do we manage those future deficits? Because we can't use one-times to offset ongoing operating position deficits. But one of the thought processes here is regardless of one of these four options before us, anything we do to pay down on the pension will help on the operating position side with future rates to the city. So, in essence, you pay here to save there. And so, those are something, some things that we're going to be thinking about over the next few months as we see this stuff play out with CalPERS and quite honestly with OSERS, because keeping in mind, in the Orange County Sheriff's Department, they have currently, I believe, two outstanding bargaining units that have not landed. And so, the quotes that I've brought forward today, the four-point-seven percent for the Sheriff's Department does not include those potential, you know, negotiated results with salary. And if you can play back to last year, what they ended up doing was no more pension pickup, but they added a few more grades to the deputy's salary grade. So, they gave them a few more steps to go into, which obviously negatively impacts us over the long term because it's more money from a contractual standpoint. So, this is something that we're going to be really focusing on over the next quarter with regards to that.
Yes, thank you, Eric. So, moving on to other expenditures, moving right into, we were talking about OCSD, and so I just wanted to talk about our public safety expenditures because they represent in total about forty-five percent of our general funds operating budget, and so that's police, fire, ambulance, and marine safety expenses. So, our police contract, our first estimate, it increases by about four-point-seven percent or six-hundred-and-seventy thousand, up to about fifteen million. The increases are based on the current MOUs in place with OCSD. As Eric just mentioned, there are a few that are not negotiated yet. So, once those are, those could mean increases for our contract, depending on where those negotiations land. And our forecast assumes the same staffing levels as current, the current year. Future years, we have a four-point, four percent increase average, but we haven't made any assumptions or changes to reflect any future staffing. And that four percent, OCSD has not given us any kind of indication, they're working on that, their long-term number. So, that's what we're going with for this, at this point, but that number could go up or down as well.
Judy, before we leave this slide, Eric, is this one of the initial forecast increase, increases we're going to see from the sheriffs? Because this is the lowest one we've seen.
This is the first estimate. We typically, they have three estimate stages, so potentially, we could get a second estimate and a third estimate. Historically, as James has indicated, that they typically, the first estimate is high, and we subsequently see lower estimates at second estimate and third estimate. But right now, we've just received the first estimate.
Okay. Has something changed? It's low, much lower this time than it has been in years past?
Not that, not that I'm aware of. One of the things that we did receive, and Judy can chime in as well, one of the things we received in the first estimate was next year, some costs to look out for. And so, body cameras are going to be a significant issue for the Orange County Sheriff's Department. They also anticipate having to hire staff from a public records standpoint and dealing with that. And then there'll be an infrastructure cost to it as well, similar to the eight-hundred megahertz. And then I think there was also some other impacts they identified.
Well, I'm, there were, but I'm thinking last year's increase was around seven, seven, eight percent. But that was incorporating that overtime. I don't know if you remember, there was that whole overtime was sort of off the books, and then they put it in the book. So, it was a little bit, it seemed higher than it was because we were paying that cost, we just weren't paying it in the contract, if that makes sense. And I can't remember the prior years before that, but I don't think this is that far off from those years.
Well, this is generally where we end up at, but they always come in initially at nine, I'd say seven-point-eight or whatever that year was the lowest one I remember previous to this one, but usually it's somewhere nine or higher.
In the first estimate.
Is our initial estimate. So, that's why I just, it's, that jump, number jumps out to me as way lower than we normally get.
Now, does this, does this number include, as you indicated, last year, we had a seven percent, but we also were paying out overtime and through a different fund, so it didn't, it didn't match up, but we ended up washing out at the end.
Correct.
Reconciled. Are we also, this last year, haven't we still been paying a lot of overtime out? That doesn't include the contract numbers?
It's in the contract numbers, though. That was the difference. So, the overtime we are paying out is all in this number, so you don't have to go and look at vacancies and kind of do a, you know, a math with it. It's all in this number, so. But that's a good point, Chris, and so we do have to be careful when the second one comes in that we plan for that, there may be higher costs.
It's going to go lower than I would.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Okay. Drop?
I have a question about this. Last year, we had the Matrix study, and last year, we didn't have Lieutenant Peters. I'm very eager to hear, when it comes time to the budget, his thoughts on whether we're using the money the way he would like it to be used because he inherited the staff mix and the staff composition and the budget level. And he's done, in my view, a really strong job of connecting in the community. So, I'd like to have him weigh in on this and if this is the right number, assuming to the points council member hand-made, that the four percent is a placeholder. But...
And we also, out of that Matrix study, this is a good time to address the Public Safety Task Force. And so, we've already had four meetings with the task force, and we're anticipating two more meetings. And that would be to bring back to the council as part of the budget workshop, the recommendations of the Public Safety Task Force is recommending as part of the Matrix study, and then also having Lieutenant Peters here to communicate his concerns and what his wants are.
Yeah, that's going to be important because I, I'm, and I have this all over my notes from going through this for the last week. I personally believe we're going to be coming back saying, we need to increase our deputy count, that we've looked at the Matrix, that we've seen, we've, he, Peters, Chief Peters has done a fantastic job, I believe, in interacting with the public and getting his people out there visible, and getting all the things the Matrix talked about as far as visibility of the patrols and everybody else to give people the assurance of feeling of that there's people, that they are, they are safe because they are out there. And I just think now, between our population increase and forty-seven, fifty-seven, and one-oh-nine, and our huge speed slam with, with all the issues that we have from the sober living homes and the transients, and I know I'm on, I'm getting on my high horse and talking, you know, like from a pulpit, but I do believe we need to find a way, as we are shortening our, we're losing money on the revenue side, to pick up, find money to, to pay for more, more deputies out there to, because we, we, we need to make a bigger show, and I think we need to be responsive to it. But that's, just keep that in the forethought.
Well, and to finish my thought and building on that, the mix is probably, maybe the dollar amount is right, but the mix might be different. You know, we had traffic enforcement issues, we have the deputies on the ground, we have an investigative unit, there's a lot of different things that might be done differently with a new chief in town. And a high horse on a pulpit, what an image.
I'm sure it's hot.
The other thing to keep in mind, too, is the Orange County cities banded together and also contributed money, just like San Clemente did, to have Matrix, who won the RFP, to do a study of Orange County Sheriff's Department costs. And that should be coming, we should start seeing some of those tentative results and recommendations within the next two to three months. So, hopefully, we can get some feedback before the actual budget adoption process. So, just to think about. But your points are made well, Mr. Councilmember Schwartz.
Okay, so I'm going to move on from our police services to our fire services. So, here as well, we received a first estimate, eight, eight-point-eight million, basically. The projected increase at four-point-five percent or three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. Now, that increase, that's the highest that we're allowed to have in our contract. So, even though this is a first estimate, that number's not going to change very much. There are a couple of actual costs in there for vehicle replacement, so that number may change a little bit, but in general, this is where we're going to land. Eric pointed out earlier, we have a fourth firefighter that's being funded right now via, it's not OCSD, it's OCFA, OCS, you'd love it if OCSD funded your fourth firefighter, but it's OCFA. So, they agreed the first two years to be fully funded by OCFA. So, we're in the second year of that, going into eighteen, nineteen. And so, then in future years, we'll be assuming that cost over time. And the full cost of that in twenty-four, twenty-five is about seven-hundred thousand. Now, again, this is without the increases that will likely occur over the next six years. And so, that number, you know, is likely to go up, and with that total will be, not sure. But keep in mind, as, you know, you're approaching a million dollars there, that's an additional million dollars we have to find in the budget to be able to fund this position over this time period.
So, what you're telling me is that one firefighter position costs a seven-hundred thousand dollars?
That's three.
It's three because it's a twenty-four hour rotation.
Okay, thank you. I was going, I was going to say.
I saw you return PowerPoint, I'm a billionaire.
Yeah. Yeah, they're not, not that high paid, so that's, and that's the fully loaded...
Judy, can I ask a question?
Yes.
In here, it talks so much about, you know, staffing, and we want that fourth firefighter on the engine, we're paying extra for it. Do we have any say over staffing on CF, OCFA on our contract, on how they staff? Like, like, how many captains are we going to have? How many engineers are we going to have? This is saying how many firefighters are we going to have?
It's, we're pretty much stuck with what they, what they say.
You mean how they, how they...
Well, we, as a, well, a member of the council's a member of the board.
Thank you.
And so, the board can direct staff to do that. But to James's point, if the professional staff and the firefighting staff is making recommendation, we're re-engineering with a twenty-five-member board the recommendations, it would be fairly unusual, so.
I don't, I don't think we're going to change the number of captains or battalion chiefs or engineers, even if we did want to change the number of engineers. We can't do that.
Well, I'm just concerned that, that we're, say, I mean, we know they're under engineers, that we're getting engineers that have been up so many hours, and we're not really getting a fresh engineer when we're saying, which they wanted, the fourth firefighter, that maybe that should be a point. Why isn't that a point for the board?
What are you saying? I don't understand.
Because I don't know that we're getting adequately filled if we are trying, if they're funding to meet our budget, if they're budgeting on overtime, instead of having the jobs there, the people there. I'm just saying, we might be getting shortcut, and why are we going through all this to add a fourth firefighter?
The positions are filled. The positions are filled.
By overtime.
Positions are filled.
I agree, but why wouldn't our city have a choice on that?
So, you're not getting shortcut on services. So, let's, let's be clear. So, you're saying shortcut on what aspect?
You're, you're, we're getting short on having firefighters, or I'm sorry, engineers that are working overtime.
Okay, so, we're worried about the stress on...
So, we're getting shortchanged by that.
Okay, what does shortchange mean to you?
Not having a fresh person there in position.
Okay, all right, so then we not, have optimal working conditions? So, they're not optimal working conditions?
No.
Okay, all right. Because shortchange assumes that we're getting ripped off. That's the term that is loaded on there.
No, I just think...
So, that's what shortchange means, that you're giving somebody less change on the end of it.
Okay, I get that. But I think we're not getting the same that we would get.
Level of service.
Because, and it's more, it's more in front of me when I see so much, we're going to this fourth firefighter, and everything's being put on that, and yet, we allow them to fund overtime and not have the people in the jobs.
I think the words are very important, right? So, words are very important. Shortchange, to me, implies you're paying for something, and you're not getting it, right?
Well, I don't think I'm getting a fresh person...
We're getting coverage, right? Well, okay, that's...
We, we know it's hard to work twenty-four hours, especially multiple shifts.
You know, we can abolish the overtime system, right? So, we're, you know, that's what it's, you know, predicated upon. But I do think that there are shortfalls in how engineering, I think you can improve how the engineering be rotated, I think you can bring on more folks, and I think you could do that.
I just think maybe our city should, should ask for that, especially if we're going to go into deficit by a fourth firefighter that they wanted, and yet, we're funding all our other positions with overtime. If you just understand what I mean, that's, that's why I'm...
I do, I do understand. I do understand what you mean.
I'm sorry you used the word shortchange, but to me, I would rather have the bodies in there to where I know, you know, I've got fresh people than, than this.
I, I don't think I would propose to the union to eliminate overtime work because he might not be fresh enough.
You're not, but there's a difference between overtime and forced hired.
There is, there's...
Big difference. And I don't mind the overtime.
Chris, get away on this, if you want.
There's a lot of people who want to work overtime, but then there's some that don't because they have certain other things they need to do at this time. But I just don't like the forced hired, and I think they're balancing their budget to us on that.
Absolutely.
And I think that's something we should be concerned about.
I, I just want to say that I completely support Councilmember Ward and her drive to create better working conditions for all firefighters for the OCFA. But to her point, us being shortchanged is actually us being shortchanged in a good way. So, we're paying less for services than we normally would be due to the fact that we're filling those positions you're talking about in overtime, so...
With an overtime payment. It's, it's a little counterintuitive.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, in a lot of ways.
And so, I just appreciate the conversation being had here, so that you will carry that water for us up to the OCFA board, because I do support her position.
Yeah, I've had these conversations with staff there. I think that there's a few things that, you know, in terms of the engineering staffing, you know, these are different things that I've noticed there, the captains, et cetera. I think that, you know, OCFA is a member agency that's, that is actually directly connected to cities. There's a member city council and, and every board member. And so, costing is a big deal. Cost increases are a big deal. And so, they're, you know, I think that's what the push is, to manage it to a way that is sensitive to those cost increases. And so, I'll communicate that message, of course, that, you know, we're concerned, and after conversations, I went and toured the firehouse a few weekends ago. After conversations, I could see how challenging that would be on families and the men that are being forced into, and the women that are being forced into service. But there's larger financial forces at play in terms of how OCFA is being run, so. But I'll certainly communicate that, it was very clear to me after getting a closer look at it.
Just, and this might be a little picky, but it might help people when they first glance and see any of this stuff as we're looking through it. I would love us to give a definition there of when we talk about the fourth firefighter, I would love us to give a definition there of when we talk about the fourth firefighter, that it's a, it's a, it's a position that is, it's a twenty-four-seven. It's filled by three bodies.
Okay.
So, because the immediate image says, I got a fourth firefighter, he's costing me that.
Yes.
So if we could at least somehow show the fact that, that fourth firefighter position is covered by three individuals, that it just might.
Firefighter shift.
Yeah.
Plus cost of three additional firefighters.
Yeah.
Yes.
Optics is everything.
Yes. Good point, thank you. Okay, so we'll move, we'll move from a fire services contract. Whoops, went right past. So our ambulance program is the other public safety item that I wanna talk about. We've gone through a lot of changes with this over the last several years. If you remember, we had one ambulance, then we had one plus a seasonal, then we got rid of the seasonal, we had one plus OCFA and a care ambulance, then we did an RFP, and we ended up with two care ambulances. So finally, for the first year, we have, we know what our costs are gonna be, it's not based on actuals, we have a contractual amount. So next year, this will go up seventy-two thousand dollars, six point two percent. It's all care ambulance, they provide two full-time ambulances, and the total contract is about one point two million annually. Now, I just wanna point out that that increase at six point two seems high, but most of their contract is based on their staffing costs, and their staffing is lower wage people, and so as the minimum wage in California increases, we're going to see increases in their contract because they've built that in. So they may be large, because you can imagine, a dollar on a ten dollar is a big percentage, that's ten percent right there. So as these go up, ten dollars, eleven, twelve, thirteen, over the next several years, I think fifteen is where minimum wage tops out, we're gonna see these increases.
Important to note, too, one of the issues that not only CARE, but all the ambulance providers are dealing with is LA has a higher minimum wage than the rest of the state. And so one of the things that CARE has had to do is provide that same cost to their Orange County employees, because at the end of the day, what you'd see is no one wanting to work in Orange County and go to LA County to make more money. And so that's something that they were very cautious about, as well as the other ambulance providers, because they didn't wanna see the candidate pool drained with regards to, you know, leftovers, so just as a side note.
Have we thought about putting this back out to bid? I mean, I, I, a six point two percent increase after the first year, I mean, I remember all this blood, sweat, and tears that you guys went through, just to get this thing put together the first time. And it's common in practice of bidding on contracts, and I've only been involved with that for thirty-plus years, is that, especially on a service contract, which I happen to be an expert on, they'll get their foot in the door, eat it the first year, or whatever the first term is.
Eat it the first year, Steve, so that you're giving it to them.
Eat it the first term, or the first year, whatever's.
I don't think it's either of those, but continue.
But then come back and slam it, and get your profit margin back into where you want it. And the city is sitting there saying, well, we don't wanna spend the money again to go out to another bid, so I guess we'll just live with this.
I'll jump in for a second here, Steve. I support you a hundred percent, I think that's a great idea. The only flaw of this, sorry Judy, for stepping on your feet here, is no one else put in. We got, we got one return, and that was CARE, and they know that. And so if we put it back out to bid again, it might not be as favorable when it comes back, and we're into a contract now that's tied down, so. And this was a projected forecast, the sixty-two percent was what we signed on for, so this isn't something shocking to us. I mean, it's a shocking number, but.
It's just, it's a big number, and, and I do know how that works, because I know how it works.
I totally agree, I just, I figured the same result was worse.
Yeah, all right.
Well, and when we did the RFP, just, you know, that, we looked at that, because it was, you know, six point two, what is that? And it really is all related to that staffing cost, so I'm not sure, I mean, if someone has a magic way to pay people nine dollars an hour instead of twelve dollars of minimum wage, I'm not sure how they would do it, and that's what most of, I mean, we have their detailed breakdown of the line items, so we could share that with you if that might make you.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, also discuss with, possibly going forward, was this just an annual contract that we put out for an RFP?
We have a five-year agreement with them.
Okay, we have a five-year agreement with them, it's, it's annual renewable, or is it reviewable or anything?
We could cancel it, yes. We have a cancelability, and it's annually we have it.
And does it have a built-in increase at six point two percent?
Yes, we know each cost for the next five years, we know exactly what the cost is.
Well, we've already signed for it, so there's no reason to discuss it.
But we, I mean, to your point, we could change, but I don't know what we, we got one bid, so.
The other thing that puts us in a bad spot is when your current provider, the OCFA, sends you a letter saying, we're no longer interested in helping you out, good luck, gives you a little tap on the back on your way out the door, and then no one else signs up to say, hey, we wanna do it for you, you're kind of in a, between a rock and hard place.
You looked at me. Looked right at you.
Well, just make a note of it, I'd like to maybe get together with you guys when it comes up, when it does renew. We, if we have to push this down a year, whatever, but I'm in that business, so if I can maybe, we can look at it, I'd like to see what the contract numbers and renewal numbers are, and maybe come up with some ideas.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Why don't you go ahead and put it on the agenda for a little bit?
Okay. So moving off of those, where our revenue and expenditures, the largest item, so if we look at how all this falls out in terms of our operating position, we've talked about these numbers a little bit, but basically in eighteen nineteen, the coming budget year, based on the forecast only, we're at about four hundred thousand. In nineteen twenty, you know, it's a hundred thousand, but it's really lower than that, and then negative in the years following that. And, you know, those negatives are all attributable to things we've already talked about. We're adding a firefighter, we have OCSD increases, we have pension cost increases, we have staff increases, so as always, we will work on these numbers, and as we come back with a positive operating position, that changes obviously the future numbers as well. So if you look at this graphically, what does this mean in terms of our unassigned fund balance, which is our savings account? What does that mean? So seven point two million is what we expect to end the current year at seven point two million. It may be higher than that, as we have vacancies and that type of thing that aren't necessarily included there, so when the number comes out, maybe it's eight million, but that's the number at the end of the year. And then you could see how we decrease, based on the forecast over time, to a negative six point six, if nothing else changed, in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And this is what everybody calls my doom and gloom slides, and you hear it every year, but that's what the numbers show, and so we do make changes to adjust those. Every year it's, and then to get a better doom and gloom slide, let's look at the next one. The first one did not include any capital projects, so all the things that we wanna do, restroom repairs, maintenance to, you know, beaches and parks and things like that, those are capital project one-time costs, and when you add those in, you could see that the number gets drastically even lower by the end of twenty-two, twenty-three. Now, this is just based on what was in the budget last year, so in our long-term capital projects, we have every year, so that's what this is based on. That changes, we're actually in the process of our CIP update, so you can't guarantee that, these are not guaranteed numbers, it's just the concept that we have a lot of capital projects, and that as we fund them, you know, we're twenty million dollars short to fund this.
If we implemented everything on the books, without any care for our budget, then this is what it would look like.
Right. So that's why we have the hard decisions sometimes about do A or do B. Okay, so getting past that. There's some other fund balance items that could help us in the future, or just to let you know where these are. So Marblehead Development, we talked about this a little bit, future phases, additional stores, restaurants, I believe there's a movie theater that's supposed to open, so there is some revenue in those, both property tax and sales tax. So we haven't included those in the forecast, but that may help us in the long run. The Belota land sale, so if you remember, over the last few years, we've been selling the lots, and I think there were three, I think there were twenty-five lots altogether. By the end of this fiscal year, all of those will have been sold, all the money will have come in. We've used the money in the general liability fund to meet our reserve requirements and our general liability insurance retrospective payments. We've also left all the money in there for unanticipated legal costs, and so we've had quite a few, quite a bit of legal costs, as Eric mentioned earlier, and we've been funding it with these proceeds. So at one point, we thought we'd have some proceeds, and we could add it back to the general fund, but I think those are getting eaten up here in the general liability fund, but there could be something left over to be put back in the general fund in the long term.
Judy, could we get a, an update on what's going on with this particular item, in terms of, when you say end of the year, you mean calendar year or fiscal year?
Fiscal year, this fiscal year. There's two, I think, that are in escrow.
Because we all went into it with a certain expectation of what the lots were going to sell for, so if you could let us know how Scott Hunt did, and also, to your point, there was an expectation there'd be some surplus there.
The final lot just sold, and Tom Bonniget and Ken Nats are working up a report to bring back to you right now.
Perfect.
On the, on the status of it.
For the whole, the whole transaction?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-four lots, twenty-five lots, whatever it was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then also, just as a reminder, we have the Vista Hermosa, La Pata Vista Hermosa land there, way back when, when we did a, talk about time flying, right? We did an appraisal several years ago, three point three million, don't know what the value is now, but if that land was sold, there'd be more money for our savings account, if you will, but there's other uses that may be considered for that land as well, so we're not assuming that that's gonna happen, just kinda mentioning that that's still there.
We've been, we've been waiting to get through SB two before we address that, those properties right there.
We still have some potential less Cs, right, on that property?
Eric and I have, have met with a number of interested parties for the La Pata Vista Hermosa corner, various retail, commercial projects, entertainment projects. You know, it'll come down to discussing it with the council, and, and figuring out what the direction is. Do you, what kind of amenity do you wanna see there? And what do you foresee? Do you foresee selling it, or do you foresee leasing it? And that's a philosophical decision that the council needs to make.
Can I ask Steph one more request on the Marblehead development? You know, we heard sometime this last year that they had hired designers from Pacific Beach, I think that was the Huntington Beach project, to redesign the restaurant pads, and we have heard nothing since then. So I think, could we get an update on whether that's still a plan for it?
Cecilia, do you have anything to say about it?
Before you sit down.
You know, we've, we've, our big project with the outlets has been the signage issue, and we know that they're in, in permitting right now for a theater. We don't know the theater chain, and we're getting close to the hotel phase, but we haven't had any discussions that I'm aware of with restaurants.
Hi, Cecilia Guardo-Daly, Community Development Director. My understanding is they did contract out with a retail leasing firm to help with the leasing of the restaurant pad sites, not a redesign of the pad, but a leasing of the restaurant sites, and we have not had any inquiries from the outlets, or any new additional information on the restaurant pads. The only developments that have occurred relate to, as James mentioned, the theater, they did submit project plans for a theater, and we are currently reviewing the hotel plans as well. And Chick-fil-A.
Because what was in the paper was that they had hired those people from Pacific Beach, and they were going to kind of replan that area to make it like Pacific Beach, and more oriented to locals, along with just restaurants, that there might be actual, some shops types in there.
Pacific Beach is one of Huntington, is that, yeah, the Huntington.
They hired those, those people, so, but then we never heard anything else, so I'm just wondering what's going on with the restaurant front.
We can certainly reach out to the outlets and get some information, if they're willing to share that with us, and bring it back to the council.
For budgeting purposes, it would be good to kinda know if they're getting any interest on that for future years?
Okay, we will look into that, let you know.
So just quickly, I just wanna talk about our reserves, our emergency reserves, and so we will, at the end of eighteen nineteen, based on this forecast, we'd have twelve point six million, and then you can see the growth there each year. This is twenty percent of our operating expenditure, so as those grow, we grow our reserve to make sure that we maintain that level. GFOA best practices is eighteen percent of operating expenditure, so we're a little bit higher than that. And when I'm done, I'm gonna be done here in just a minute, Jake is going to come up, and he's gonna talk about reserves in general. This is one of the, this is the emergency reserve, and he's gonna talk about other reserves and recommendations for funding those. So are there any questions on anything that I've presented so far? We've already been through those? Okay, so then I'm gonna call Jake up, yes?
I have one.
Go ahead.
So when you guys sit around and, with your crystal ball, when's the recession?
The downturn, is that?
Yeah, the correction, yeah.
You know, that Cal State Fullerton forecast, which I, you know, we use to do our forecasting, they've talked about the next couple of years, they expect to continue to see growth for the next couple of years, with then maybe a downturn, and when I say the next couple of years, looking at this calendar year eighteen and nineteen, and then thinking in twenty, there may be, you know, start to be a downturn. I don't know how confident they even felt in the, in that, as though, because you've got so many changes occurring on the federal level with regulations and taxes and that type of thing, that it's hard to look at the market and look at the trends and think, this is what it's gonna do because of those changes. So that's the best information they've given us so far, though.
Okay, 'cause when I see the year-over-year increases that we've projected, it implies a smooth economic environment, which it won't be, and I was, yeah, somehow, it, yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and, and on a serious note, it's interesting to me, because cities can usually build when the economy is bad in a way that the private sector can't, so if we have any capital projects, and we know there's a soft economy coming, we might wanna time our activity there, so that we don't have to compete in the tough construction climate.
Mr. Triton La Pata Vista Hermosa came.
Perfect.
At, at great timing for that. It's an interesting thing, too, because one of the byproducts of higher real estate taxes, as fun as it is to see this massive increase in property value and property taxes for a city, I think there's a very different level of service expected by someone who buys their home for a million and a half versus someone who bought it for two hundred thousand dollars. And in terms of our municipal services, the professionals of the planning department, the street cleaning, the sidewalks, the public safety, all those services.
Recreation programs, yeah.
You're just going to get a higher level of expectation, and it's not bad, it's not good, it's just the way it is. And so I, I think it's something that we all know, you know, I'm just stating something that is very intuitive to us, but as we see an increasing amount of turnover, people migrating south to our community, and newer faces, it's gonna add levels of complexity that I don't know if we've faced as much nowadays.
Oh, we're facing it, I think we're there.
It's, well, it's, we're already there to a degree, but we also have to retain a lot of the essence of what makes our community, I think, so unique, and so we have to really fight against, not, it's not, but we have to really define ourselves and stick to that.
You know, that, that brings a good point, Tim, because this is what you and I were discussing a few weeks back, and San Clemente's always been, for lack of a better term, on the frontier of the county, we're on the, the leading edge, right? We're out here by ourselves, and so twenty years ago, people came here knowing that you're gonna be away from the county corps, and with being away from the county corps, you're not gonna get the same level of service that you would from the county corps. And now that we're seeing a turnover in our populace, we're seeing a turnover in our housing market, people are moving out of the county corps to the frontier, expecting to get the same level of service. And we don't have a two hundred million dollar Irvine budget, we have a sixty million dollar San Clemente budget. So how we harness expectations with low service is gonna be an issue for us moving forward.
Yeah, and I agree, and I think one of the problems is that historically, the city has always looked more for its Spanish village-by-the-seat character, and kept it a residential type of pocket community, and so therefore, our neighbors have benefited from us having to shop there and go there. So sales tax revenue has never been something we've seen have any significant growth here. I do know the outlet concept was to help offset that, but a two-point-something percent growth over the years that we've been seeing in sales tax just isn't gonna cut it. I mean, that's really where I think that we need to be able to, that we have an ability to increase. Property taxes are gonna be where they're gonna be. I mean, inflation or whatever's gonna adjust that, we're pretty well-built out on what we're gonna be, be able to tax anyway with a property tax. So I really think as, as our community responds, and we, we try to deal with having services in here, first-class services for all our residents, that hopefully we can support, the businesses will grow, bring in some of the high-end stuff, destination stuff, and therefore, we can grow our sales tax revenue. So I think whatever we can do to, to work on the sales tax side also, will benefit the money that we need to get in to spend.
One thing that I wanna comment on is, every city is feeling the sales tax going lower. It's not just us. I just read today, the City of Mission Viejo, what their mayor's talking about, and he's, they have lower sales tax, too, and they have them all. And so what they're trying to tell people is, hey, your Amazon purchase, we don't get the money for it. So every single city's feeling it. It's not just us, and all these packages, you know, people that, that's the new way that they're buying things. So I, I understand what you're saying, but there's a lot of other forces in play that we have no control over. We have companies here that are wonderful companies, that do amazing things, and they're making millions of dollars, and we get zero of it, because it's, it originates, the sale originates in another state. We get nothing from it.
Well, we still get business taxes, I mean, I don't, I didn't see business tax in the list.
No, we.
Well, like business license tax, but they're not, that's not significant revenue.
It's not a significant.
It's very minimal. So Irvine, I mean, I'm sorry, Mission Viejo was just talking about this two months ago, so, and they have them all.
Kathy makes an exceptional point. I think one thing philosophically, this is, this is an interesting conversation, frankly. I think philosophically, though, one of the things that has supported a lot of, I believe, a lot of the desirability of our community, and frankly, a lot of the, the, the home value is the fact that we've been able to retain an essential charm. There's obviously, and plus, as you also go upstream in terms of these homes and the There's obviously, and plus, as you also go upstream in terms of these homes and the value paid, there are also different shoppers. And they're different, you know, it's, it's a different type of, different type of resident, probably spend a lot of money locally in restaurants and businesses and other things like that. So, it's a chicken egg, right? You know, as, as the, as the homes get more viable and sell to people who are coming into town, they obviously also have purchasing power and, and will be doing things like that. But I, I agree with Lori on, on one thing is, is that in two thousand four or five, did we expect that oh seven, oh eight would be such a massive disaster? And then the commensurate effects and the, the subsequent effects in oh eight, oh nine, and ten. I came in, in ten, when it was, they were already addressing the issues, the current council is already addressing those problems. But it was a severe, you know, it was a severe cuts that were made to it. And so, it would be nice to be able to, I mean, obviously, the forecasts are what they are, but it would be nice to at least know that we are prepared for what I believe to be that eventuality is, is, is a, is going to be a significant drawback in, you know, either home values, sales tax, et cetera, so. All right, well, I'll take that one.
So, it was a huge rise.
That's a, that's a fifty cent word right there. And I'll charge you guys later, don't worry about it.
Okay, so Jake's going to come up and talk about reserves. After Jake, we're going to talk about capital projects, Ken Nats will be up, and then we'll have Brian and with the Information Technology Strategic Plan. So, not too much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. My name is Jake Ron, I'm the Financial Services Officer for the City of San Clemente. Oh, did I press? There we go, my bad. All right. So, just going through the different reserve categories, we have the operational, the infrastructure, and the emergency. Again, the foundation is the emergency, and then we try to set aside the infra, infrastructure reserves and then the operational reserves. And I skipped over one already. Here, there we go. All right, for the emergency reserves, no changes are recommended. As you may recall, remember in previous years, we changed it to twenty percent of operating expenditures for the general fund, which will set at twelve point one million dollars. And enterprise fund, emergency reserves, we're going to keep those at twelve percent. All right, so for the reserve change, uh, changes in the capital infrastructure reserves, the first one is transfer the three hundred eighty thousand from the general fund to the facilities maintenance reserve. And again, some of that is comprised of setting aside money for the pier and then also some of the regular routine maintenance. The second recommendation is transferring, hopefully, an amount between one million and two point five million. And again, we have a, basically, a backlog of, I'll call it, big facilities that will need work in the future, whether it be the city hall or the marine safety building, we won't get into all the details. But there are significant facilities and significant work that needs to be done. So, this kind of planning for the future a little bit and setting those money, those funds aside. And as you know, we've been going through the park asset reserve and funding that. That one, we've been focusing on doing the equipment replacement, the playground equipment replacement. And also, we've been setting aside money for artificial turf repairs and replacement, so.
Have we seen a significant cost in, in maintaining our artificial turf?
Well, keep in mind, I, I might talk a little capital and I may or may not be wrong on this. I think more from the financial aspect of thing. Vista Hermosa was built five, six years ago, so we're getting to the point where there is going to need to be some significant money put in to replace those. So, we've been trying to plan ahead and set money aside, so when we do get that big two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollar project, you know, we have the funds available to do it.
When you come to us for that money?
Dan?
I'm just, I'm just putting this out there on the record so you understand. When you come to us, I would love to see what we paid for the art, the, the original artificial turf in lieu of paying for, for grass and that the cost over the, you know, to maintain that versus what it costs to maintain the grass and cut and mow over the years. So, that when, before we spend more money to put in additional arti, artificial turf, I would like to know the fact that overall, we are being cost-effective and not just spending money on artificial turf, which has, it has supporters and detractors from it. But I, I, my, my concern and reason I support it was because I thought it was going to save us money over a long term. So, if we're not saving money over long term, if the cost to put in regular turf and maintain, water it and cut it and maintain it is a lot cheaper than putting in artificial turf that's only going to last us for five to seven years, then I, I want to be able to see that. Does that make sense to anybody?
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay.
All right, and then the third, this is kind of almost a carryover from previous years as we've been implementing lucidity. We're going to continue to gather information as to what assets are out there and what needs to be done and basically analyze capital asset categories and identify assets funded for replacement in the facilities maintenance. Basically, capital equipment replacement and park asset. A, a quick way to synopsize this is for the park asset, we kind of identified, all right, right now, we're just doing playground equipment replacement and setting aside funds for turf replacement. You know, basically identifying those other categories and maybe consider additional things in the park asset that are substantial costs and identify those in conjunction with lucidity. So, hopefully, that makes a little bit of sense to you.
If I may, one of the things that we want to do with these reserves is they're outdated in terms of defining what they're there to fund. And so, for instance, park asset reserves has historically been playground equipment. But as we land the park master plan, that will help direct us as to what other replacement costs are needed. And we can better than define these reserves because the one thing I think anybody in finance loves is looking at the facility maintenance reserve and saying, this reserve is for X, Y, and Z and not sneaking in a, an F or an A. And so, we want to be better at identifying that and then using lucidity, again, to implement highest risk to lowest risk because for us, it's all about replacing the highest risk from a liability standpoint down.
Okay, so now I'm talking from decades ago of being an HOA president and dealing with our reserve assets. And I, I thought we always had a reserve report that we listed all those assets that we would have to replace and we assigned a dollar value to them and what we anticipated that cost would be. So, that's what you're going to be providing us, right?
More or less, more or less. I mean, I'm not, coming from HOA background as well, we're not going to get into like, you know, small things, but we're going to set a threshold, threshold of, let's say hypothetically, twenty-five hundred dollars of value and higher and then prioritizing all of those needs and coming up with a life, lifetime expectancy and the monthly or the annual contribution to that reserve to fund those replacements.
Yeah, and, and that goes a little bit into working with lucidity and getting that information and putting it all together.
And I would encourage, as part of that exercise, which I think is excellent, is rethinking the cap on what the definition of a fully funded reserve is. For example, on the park asset reserves, one point three five million is fully funded, yet your report says park assets total sixty-five million.
Yeah.
And then we heard earlier this evening that there's about five million dollars of BPR, master plan items coming at us. So, you, I encourage you to challenge us to make sure that the top, the cap for the reserves is what it should be at to be declared fully funded.
Well, yeah, well, you know, well, six point five in, in park assets, but the reserve of one point, whatever it was, that's, that's the total of what they expect that we're going to have to spend, for what I know, is on those, on the, all the park assets, right? So, that, it is fully funded?
It is fully funded, well, this, I would, this was something I brought to council when I got on, this, I, there was no park reserve asset. And at the time, we just pulled the number out of the air and there was, it was very difficult to even find money. It was like, oh, here's thirty thousand, let's throw it over there, here's another fifty thousand. So, now, what I'm challenging finance to do is, because now we have lucidity and we have a lot of, you know, smarter thinking behind us, is one point three five the right number?
Okay, so where, what number should we be to?
To define full funding.
Okay.
Do you agree with that?
I agree.
Okay.
All right, and moving on, one recommendation that we're also making for the operational reserves is to transfer an amount of a hundred twenty thousand from the general fund to the accrued leave reserve. As you may recall, we tried to get this up to full funding last year, but basically, with the low interest rate environment, MOU changes and a whole bunch of other things going through, we just wanted to take one more stab at it and do the hundred and twenty thousand, and that should get us back on a go-forward basis to full funding, so. All right, and with that, if anybody haven't, has any questions on the reserve paper, feel free to ask me now. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
So, do you want to take a motion on this reserve analysis and then move on?
So, we need a motion on the, on the reserve analysis component?
I'll do that, okay. I move that we, one, direct staff to analyze capital asset categories and identify assets funded for replacement in the purpose section of the capital equipment reserve, the facilities maintenance reserve, and the park asset reserve after lucidity's implementation. Number two, we transfer an annual amount of three hundred and eighty thousand from the general fund to the facilities maintenance reserve for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen. Number three, transfer an amount between one to two point five million in fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen to the facilities maintenance reserve from the general fund's unassigned balance. Four, transfer two hundred and eighty thousand from the general fund to the park asset reserve for FY twenty eighteen nineteen. And five, transfer an amount of a hundred and twenty thousand from the general fund to the accrued leave reserve for the same fiscal year.
Motion by Doncheck, second by Hamm, all those in favor?
I've got a question first.
Prior to the vote, may I have a question?
Just all these numbers that we just are voting on, they're all included with all the, all the budget numbers we've had before. We're not adding anything else to our debt or structure. That's just one to verify.
Correct. Clarification satisfied?
Satisfied.
We have a motion by Doncheck, a second by Hamm, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero, thank you. Tom?
Good evening, Mayor Brown and members of the council. Tom Bonniget, Public Works Director. Ken Nats would normally provide this presentation to you, but he is unfortunately fell ill, so I am pinch hitting for him tonight. What I'd like to do is just briefly highlight. Is this going? Are you doing it for me? Okay, thank you. Four projects mentioned in the paper and also briefly discuss the Casa Romantica parking lot, and that is not in your paper. And I have some information on that as well. This is not, sorry. So, in terms of beach sand replenishment, there, there are two items, and I do have an update. And I know you read it in the Long-Term Financial Plan Paper regarding the Corps of Engineers project. The key point on this particular project is that there is a cost overrun that the Corps has informed us of in the design phase, which is where the project is now. That total is about three hundred thousand dollars. I will talk about a strategy, how to deal with that in the current fiscal year in a moment, but I just wanted to point that out to you. The recommendation on this slide is actually to get your direction to insert in the upcoming budget a one hundred thousand dollar placeholder, if you will, which will serve as a contingency in case we run into this again, which would not be unprecedented.
Tom, is this, is, is this portion at all covered by the grants or by any of the, the things that we're going to?
So, in the current design phase, we have up to now fulfilled our cost-sharing obligation. We did have a state grant that provided about eighty-five percent of that, and then we provide city cash for the rest. And that was our share of, of one point one million dollar design phase. Now, the Corps is telling us that it looks like they need a hundred, another hundred, another three hundred thousand. But I have a strategy how to reduce that or try to minimize the pain. But right now, it's three hundred thousand total, of which the city would be responsible for about thirty-five percent. So, yes, we had a grant for what we thought was the cost, now the cost is going up, and I have an idea on how to do that. So, that's a perfect transition if I can get the next slide. So, on the opportunistic sand project, let me just talk about this. In our current fiscal year budget right now, we have a quarter million that you approved to potentially put more sand at North Beach. The short message is it's not going to happen this year. A, because there doesn't appear to be a sand source that will come online before the end of the fiscal year. And B, one of the permits, we have four or five different permits for that, it's expired, it's a Corps permit, and I've been working with the staff there, we're just unsure when it's going to get renewed. So, it won't happen, that two hundred fifty thousand isn't going anywhere. So, my recommendation to you is to take a hundred thousand of that and transfer it to the Corps project. And then I would match that with state grants. We would shift some of our construction grant, so we do have three point four million already approved from the state to apply to construction. State staff suggested they could take some of that money, shift it to design. So, between that shift and this transfer, we can take care of our cost overrun right now and keep this process going. Then, to make up for some of the state funds that we're robbing from the future, staff has already submitted another grant application to try and replenish that at the state's urging. And next week at your council meeting, you'll have a resolution to ratify that approach. It's not guaranteed, but they're pretty committed to our project, so they, they encouraged us to do that. So, that's how we're going to try and keep the Corps project going. And then, like I said, this North Beach project's not going to happen this year. And it's my recommendation right now, we have not put anything into the fiscal year nineteen budget. I think where we are with the Corps project, we need to just go full steam and focus on that. If and when something were to come up next fiscal year, we'd come back to you at that opportunity and, and see, you know, kind of test, you know, what your desire is to pursue it. Any questions about that?
I, I do have a question regarding the design phase. So, now, the way this project was created, and correct me if I'm wrong, but once it happens, we have the option to, every five years, for fifty years, right, to exercise that sand replenishment option, that we could have that sand redumped back on the beach. Does it have to go through the design phase every time, or is this a one-time design? And then we just, it's, it's basically executing on phasing from that point? You know that?
So, it, it does not have to go through a full design process. So, the bulk of this happens once in the phase we're in.
Okay.
And that's because the regulatory approvals require two years of pre-construction monitoring. In other words, you have to go out and, and monitor a lot of different factors out there before you place sand. We get to the point where we do the initial sand placement, that's the quarter million yards, and then there will be some post-monitoring, but it won't be a design phase, we'll be in construction. And as you pointed out, after the initial sand placement, the Corps estimated every six to seven to eight years, we may need to do it again, but we're not on the hook for that. We can opt out essentially anytime. So, does that answer?
Yeah, it does answer my question, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I have one, a little question. I understand the sand replenishment concept was, program was that we had those major storms that just blew the sand out of the entire sand cell. So, the normal cycle that it would go through is wintertime, the storms would come in and pull the sand away and it would push, go down shore, down south, and then it would switch and come back to us. In the summertime, as the shifts and everything came forward, unfortunately, we had some big blowouts and it went beyond, it's outside the shift. So, we're adding more inventory, sand, into the cell so that the cycle will retain a lot of it. Sand always leaves, but it tends to come back, but it's within that cycle, I understand. Have we looked at, in the interim funding at all, any dredging concepts as far as offshore versus waiting just for opportunistic sand? But to bring some in from offshore back into the sand cell to increase the volume? Have we looked at that?
We have not, because I think what you're talking about is opportunistically, we have not. Because as part of the Corps study, they looked at the sand supply in the system, including offshore of San Clemente, and determined that part of our problem is that there's just not a whole bunch out there. In fact, where the sand would be coming from for this big project is basically offshore of Oceanside. So, we're, we're starved up here, and so, that, besides being really expensive, it just didn't look like there was enough to take it. Otherwise, the other project would have done that already. Does that answer your question? So, that's the recommendation to deal with the current funding shortfall on those two projects? Great, so for marine safety, a key point here is I need twenty-five percent more funding, about a quarter million. And that's because the one million dollar we had put in the budget was based on a preliminary estimate, it wasn't fully, fully fleshed out. Now, we have a final design estimate, we're pretty confident in that, we have a, a, a current cost estimate. And so, our recommendation, because this project is planned for fall in the next fiscal year, is to supplement the one million budget with another quarter million so we can do the structural repairs of marine safety. And specifically, the recommendation is to split it fifty-fifty in the general fund and the public safety reserve, which is consistent with the current fund split for that project. Moving on, municipal pier rehabilitation, as your council is aware, that project's underway and it'll be complete by mid-May before the Memorial Day weekend, for sure. It's currently two million dollars is the budget amount. During the building plan check, additional ADA improvements and requirements were flagged, the estimate for those is a quarter million. To keep the project going, the building department put a condition on the permit to allow the main project to continue with the ADA improvements to follow in fall because we want to stay out of, we have to stay out of the summer season. So, again, it's our recommendation to address that by getting your direction to put in a quarter million in the fiscal year nineteen budget. And then likely, what we would do is bid that work with the marine safety into one big contract and get all that work done. The ADA improvements largely consist of doing some, creating a new pathway between the at-grade railroad crossing and the base of pier restroom off to the inland side to create more gradual grades that would meet ADA requirements. As you know, that, that, that pathway has some severe grade changes, and so, that's the main feature of that improvement. And so, that's how we're recommending dealing with that issue.
Thank you.
And then, in terms of the negotiable remodel, you've heard a lot about this. The message here is the third floor is basically ready for staff move-in, and right now, we're planning on still doing that, I believe, Mr. Sun, towards the end of the month, the first. on still doing that, I believe, Mr. Sun, towards the end of the month. The first staff may be going. Certainly, by April, we should be underway with the transition from City Hall staff over to Negocio.
Yeah, so for the city manager and myself, we'll be moving over the week of, well, excuse me, the 22nd of March, and then thereafter, over the next three weeks, the rest of City Hall will be moving out in phases. So, by the middle of April, all personnel will be at the third floor site.
And then, our attention is largely shifting towards getting a detailed design for the first-floor improvements. Currently, our estimate is 2.5 million, and so we're recommending, again, a split here as shown and recommended in your fiscal year 19 budget. We're refining that, and our goal is to get underway sometime in fall and be complete by spring and summer of next year with the first floor and some minor second-floor improvements. And as you know, the main feature there is turning the lobby around, making it more customer-friendly, and facing the, what everyone thinks is the front of the building, towards Negocio, to make it more logical.
What everyone thinks is the front of the building.
I think that too.
I mean, a building facing Negocio, and it's addressed Negocio, the entrance is on the other side.
Right. See? There you go. And then, next slide, Lori. And finally, this is not in your paper, but I've been asked to share a few thoughts on this. So, the issue here concerns the parking lot at Casa Romantica, and specifically, as you know, except for the entryway, much of the lot is a decomposed granite surface, so there's concerns and issues about rutting that occur on that surface, the maintenance burden that presents also, I believe, in terms of the layout. It may not be as optimal for maximizing a number of vehicles there. So, the Casa Romantica staff, they are looking into an alternate material for the pavement of the lot or that portion. They're working on a concept and a cost estimate. While the lot is the Casa Romantica's responsibility per the lease agreement, if your council ultimately is inclined to participate in some cost sharing, I've identified here one possible funding source. To the extent water quality features will be required, the Clean Ocean Fund could legitimately help with that cost, so just, you know, planting that seed for you. There are various approvals that would be required, most notably a cultural heritage permit from the city to address cultural heritage issues, parking lot design and layout, as well as water quality. And so, that involves the applicant putting together an application package. Then we go through our development management team review process, design review subcommittee, planning commission, and ultimately council. You know, we've optimistically estimated five months, but it depends on the quality of the submittal and the details of the submittal, so it could be potentially longer. That's our, you know, best optimistic guess. And of course, there's a coastal commission permit that's required. As you know, the building's in the coastal zone, and that's really hard to crystal ball. It just depends on what comes out of coastal commission and the comments and their workload. We're optimistically guesstimating four to six months. So, we'll be looking, and there's no recommendations in the LTFP paper on this, so staff will be looking for a recommendation from you if you're inclined to continue or directing us to continue our discussions with Casa Romantica and trying to bring something back to you in time for your budget workshop, tentatively scheduled in early, mid-May. And with that, on my last slide, these are just recommendations verbatim from the LTFP report, and if you are inclined to make a recommendation on Casa Romantica, I have some suggested text for your consideration. And that's my presentation.
Tom, why was this not included in the initial report?
I think I have to defer to...
I'll speak to that. So, you know, historically, the long-term financial plan in the construction improvement analysis section deals with approved projects that have funding gaps. So, as you see tonight, we had four issues with sand replenishment funding and so forth. To date, we don't have an approved project, because there hasn't been a cost identified, but I know that we have two council members that have been working with Casa Romantica as they've been reaching out, voicing concerns with regards to safety, liability, and just, you know, overall degradation of the DG lot. And so, we've had a number of meetings with Casa Romantica to kind of let them know the process that needs to be endeavored upon in terms of first identifying what the project is and the cost. And then, once we have that done, they've identified that, then as part of the budget process, we can come back to the council and say, okay, here's the dollar amount, and deliberate with the council on a possible funding scenario or funding relationship, and then go forward with the project. As you can see from the slide presented tonight, or this afternoon, daylight savings time, we want to manage expectations, because there are a number of hurdles with this with regards to both the cultural heritage permit as well as the coastal commission. And so, we want to make sure that we're committed to the partnership with Casa, which we're very committed to, and keeping them as a partner and communicating the steps that need to take place before we can actually begin construction.
We begin construction, or they begin construction?
I'll let the city manager discuss the construction process.
We still haven't decided that. You know, it's, according to the agreement that we have with Casa Romantica, the parking lot construction maintenance is the responsibility of Casa Romantica. So, if there's a desire by the council to do a project there, we'll have to amend the amendment with, agreement with Casa Romantica and decide how to do it. I would prefer that if we do this project, that we leave the construction up to Casa Romantica, and they hire the contractor to do it. We will help them with the project design and processing it through Planning Commission and Coastal Commission, but eventually it'll be their project. We have staff that's busy on other city capital improvement projects, and they need to concentrate on that and not this project. No matter what we do, if it's a city project or a Casa project, it's going to require prevailing wage. So, that will be addressed in the contract, too.
I just need a little more help, Eric, clarifying how this rises to the level of LTFP. I mean, the list of items on this sheet is pretty substantial, and then to throw in a parking lot, I mean, that's minuscule compared to what we're talking about on the board here.
I'd like to just, as being the old one here, back in the day, we had this thing...
You're the old one here?
The old one.
There you go, Steve. You just got bumped down. I like it.
Back in the day, we had this thing called the redevelopment fund, and in the redevelopment fund, there was $500,000 for a parking lot for Casa Romantica, and it was part of LTFP. And then Sacramento decided there would not be redevelopment funds anymore. Most of the pierball activity that the city participated in was thanks to redevelopment funding. So, the city has a history of keeping this cultural resource up to the level it needs to be, but when the redevelopment funds were taken away, both the pier and Casa have been the big losers on that funding stream. So, that's why it's here. And to Tom Bonniget's point, it's kind of on its own timetable, because we don't have a price yet, and we don't have a cost-sharing method, and we don't have a timetable. But...
Ultimately, you have to remember, it's city property. We own it. The design of the current parking lot was something that the city asked Casa Romantica to do, whenever that was, 10, 15 years ago. It hasn't worked out. The design hasn't worked out. It's kind of a train wreck out there. So, we're looking for a way to partner with Casa Romantica to fix the parking lot, make it a little bit longer-lasting, and consistent with the experience that you have at Casa Romantica, because right now, the parking lot doesn't meet up to the experience you have with the rest of the facility. All right, go for it.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I seem to remember that the parking lot is the way it is because of coastal commission, that the lot had to be permeable, and that it could not be paved. And I thought that's why the material is of what it is. That's my memory of the requirements.
That's part of it, and, you know, partly staff at that time was looking to get something through coastal commission, and that was a compromise with coastal commission.
Do you remember the ECR lot, the issue with pavement versus permeable surface? I think that would come up again, but I'm wondering if this was just, if this could just be a reconfiguration of the lot, does it really need to go to coastal commission? And do we really need to change the...
We're pretty confident that it has to go to coastal commission.
Even if it was reconfiguration of how the spaces are?
If it's just a reconfiguration, prob, I don't know the answer to that. But if we're looking at a change to the surface material and the surface drainage, et cetera, then it will be.
I don't think a reconfiguration solves the essential problems, which is the way that the DG, the way that the DG has eroded, the way it's eroded, and the way that it's stopped the drainage up. And so, there's some fundamental design aspects that have to be addressed.
It could be. I still, I'm not sure, this seems like a separate city council action at a separate meeting.
Did we use a DG stabilizer on this? I mean, that was what we brought in there, was a DG stabilizer?
We didn't do the project, but we understand that it did have a DG stabilizer. It has been graded out in the past, but it just hasn't, you know...
Because we looked at that material for the trail that we sprayed down on at that, make the initial surface almost as hard as concrete, but it would stay permeable as far as allowing water to go through.
But the trail is a fairly flat surface. This has a grade to it, and so you don't have a surface that the rain can soak into. It drains away and takes part of the material with it as it goes away.
Do we have an addendum to what we have in front of us, so we know exactly what we're talking about?
We don't have a project at this point. We'll bring a project.
Tom said there was language that he would add to this.
Yeah, where's that at?
Can you go back to the last slide?
Let me ask the question, though, as part of our LTFP. We're providing direction for ratification, right? We're not, I mean, we're making these moves tonight here, but this is something that can be altered, right?
So, yes, and the purpose of the Casa Romantica slide was kind of twofold. A, to kind of disclose to the council this want to go this direction, but B, it's also to manage expectations for the Casa Romantica and the city. Up to this point, and when a design is produced, it's important to note that the city's not funding any of the design aspect. That's something that CASA is doing independently, and once they give us those costs, and we have kind of identifiable project, then we're going to be coming back to the council, you know, in the hopes of it's part of the budget presentation for the council to deliberate on what kind of funding scenario do they want to entertain, or whatever other discussions want to be had. If we don't have a cost identified in time for the budget, it wouldn't be part of the budget process, and we'd be coming back separately to the council to discuss that, but...
And most importantly, the aspect is, like it says here, provide staff direction. We have to indicate if we have majority support for this idea, like not, not, tell us what the numbers are, we're going to run it. It's like, is this something that we want to take on as a council, and do we provide staff to walk? Because we don't want the CASA to go out and provide all these plans, these supply to us, when three months later, we're going to say, yeah, we're not going to fund that. Sorry. And so, what we're trying to do is provide some ideas if this is, if this is, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong here, but if this is something that we would support coming back and finding a solution, either through a combination of funds or partnership or something like that. I think I've, what I've indicated in the meetings, to be very clear, is that, is that we should partner on this, and that we should have a place in this. Are we going to be responsible 100% of the cost? I don't believe so. That's why the design work, a lot of the things they're doing here, and there probably more of a partnership agreement there. But I do think it's a problem that needs to be solved sooner rather than later. It's not something we can pick up three years from now, you know?
And I agree 100% with everything the mayor just said. One of the frustrations in some of these preliminary meetings is CASA has an estimate for $75,000, and you'll recall, in the redevelopment funds, the placeholder was $500,000. So, the first order of business is get a design and get a cost estimate, an engineer's cost estimate, on what we're looking at here. And then, Kathy, to your point, you know, maybe it's reconfigured, maybe it's just resurfacing, and that would be a responsibility that the CASA would have to look into in terms of options for how to tackle the driveway, improve the driveway, parking lot.
I'm not sure that the city should be on the hook for what we had in redevelopment fund money, but that's like a benchmark. The other thing I'm concerned with is pulling money out of the Clean Ocean Fund and using that as a piggy bank every time we try to figure out what to do, because when that went through, there was a lot of people that didn't want that increase. They were very upset about it, and we did it. So, this would have to really be justified to come out of that. And the only way I would entertain it is if it's a cost-sharing, but not necessarily like, we're like splitting it 50-50. I'm not even sure I would do that, because based on the contract...
But what's now we're going to say is whether or not...
We're entering into saying kind of we would do this, and I see in the future them coming to us and saying, because how they've been in the past is, I'm sorry, it's your problem. You need to work on it. And for us to even entertain this means we're willing to change the contract.
Well, what I'm willing, what I'm willing to do is at least look at it. I'm not willing to look at it until I have, I actually know what we're supposed to be looking at, which means I do need to know what they plan to do out there and what the cost is going to be, and then determine whether or not, you know, because I do believe Casa Romantica is of value to the city, and I want to figure out a way to help, continue to help support them. So, but I want to, I want to know what they're talking about, what we're talking about in spending. So, I would say at least, yes, go forward, at least to get us some reasonable numbers, so we know what we're doing, and then we can determine whether or not it's something, and how much we can, and how well we can, or how we fund it.
And some of it, I think staff should evaluate what they come back with, what are things that are really necessary, and what are the things that are a want, maybe design changes they want to make, so we are clear on what's really necessary for this parking lot to work, or what's some design that they want.
Well, part of the intent, if we're going to try and target to get something for your consideration for the upcoming budget, would be for staff to receive some information so we could start ground-truthing it and have those discussions with the Casa Romantica staff and their team to figure out, okay, does this, is it fall in the world of reasonable? Is that appropriate, et cetera, and vet that a little bit before it comes to your budget workshop with a number and a cost.
So, I'm hearing two very different things. First off, let me just point out that I'm not comfortable with this coming in the 11th hour on this, because I have, I have issues that I want to be addressed, that I would love to have on the LTFP that aren't being heard this evening. One is the beach trail extension. I have a whole list of other things that I'd like to see done and have on LTFP. So, I support the CASA, but what I'm hearing from you two is that there is a perception that if we move forward with this, there's going to be some sort of cost-sharing. Cost-sharing, in my mind, to the extent, would be 10% of the project, and I don't think that's what CASA has in mind. So, my fear here is, if we do vote on this evening, and there is majority support for it, that they're going into it, spending money with the thought and the idea that we're going to be 60-40 partners in this, and I don't, I don't think that's realistic expectation.
I think that's an incredibly fair point. I would say, without putting myself in position of, you know, being presumptive as to what the CASA or this council would bear, that we're looking at at least a 50-50 share.
Yeah, see, and that, to me, I think that's a big jump.
Lori, you could stop me if I'm wrong.
I think it's fair for you to say that. I'm not criticizing your position. I'm just saying.
No, I'm just, I'm saying that that would be, because at that point, you know, if we're coming in at 10%, what are we doing? You know, what exactly is the city providing here, other than what another donor would provide? Right?
And I guess, what I would say is I think there's a partnership here, but I don't, I think it's premature to even figure out what the cost-sharing would be. And I'll tell you why. One is, we don't know the size of the project. Number two, we don't know the scope of the project. Number three, we don't have a complete understanding of the funding sources. There may be a grant out there for a cultural gem like Casa Romantica. There may be a donor out there who would want it to be the Chris Hamm parking lot and would write the check. You know, so, I would hate to see the momentum slowed down because we're stuck at the who's paying for what, since we don't even know what it is.
I agree with that. I just think for your, for your edification, it would be a fairly substantial percentage. It's, you know, to say we're going to go away with 5%, we should really walk down this path, I think would be, at least from my point of view, and I do not, you know, I haven't chatted with Lori about this, I think that would be accurate representation of my expectations.
I just want to remind the council that CASA has been here twice before the council with this project, and the direction from the council was to work with CASA on this subject. So, while it may be, we may be daylighting it here at LTFP, this is a subject that we've been talking about for, I don't know, six, nine months now, and it's a conversation that's been going ongoing, that CASA has come to the council and has asked for the council's assistance, and we've followed through with that, and we think we finally have a pathway to the project. We don't know what the financial aspect is 100% yet, but this is how we wanted to bring it forth to you, so that it will be considered at some future date.
Then I think it should be a future council meeting, because I think if we're going to look at this, it's modifying the contract, and I think all of us should go through the contract and see what it is, because maybe there's other things...
And that is our...
And it will be a future council meeting, where we talk in depth on design resources, cost-sharing, implementation plans, responsibilities, et cetera.
Then I'll say, if we tell the CASA, go ahead and, you know, bring forth the project, then we'll have a council meeting, and we'll talk about the whole thing, but not making it part of the LTFP that we're telling staff to go through with.
I have a recommendation, then. I think... I, I think if we separate this out, we have a vote on this, we can vote on the first five, get some, a solid vote on that, and then we can have a vote on the sixth.
I'm fine with that could, as a courtesy, could we hear what Mr. Bonnigat was going to propose as language for this item?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I would think we'd hear that. Okay, so, so with that-
And then let him do that to prepare.
Perfect. So with that, I move the-
Before you do on those five, I, I may have failed to mention, I just need to honor my commitment. Just last Thursday, your coastal advisory committee held a meeting and they discussed the items regarding sand replenishment. I can't mention if I'm, I can't remember if I mentioned it now and I wanted to transmit to you because it was after the time we submitted the paper that they did in fact recommend your approval of the items.
Perfect.
Yeah. Needed to get that on the record.
Okay. So I move that one, we include $100,000 from general fund for fiscal year 2018-19 CIP budget for the Corps of Engineers design phase costs in case there are additional anticipated cost increases to transfer $100,000 from North Beach Center replenishment project count number 001636457000028706 to the Corps of Engineers project count number 001411458000019907 in fiscal year 1718 and return the remaining amount of $150,000 of general fund assigned fund balance. Three, include $125,000 facilities managed reserve fund and $125,000 for the public facilities construction fee fund, public safety construction reserve. Fiscal year 2018-2019 CIP budget for the marine safety building rehabilitation number 16530 include $250,000 from the general fund in fiscal year 2018-19 CIP budget for the pier rehabilitation 80 improvements project number 16811. Five include $1.25 million from the general fund and $1.25 million from the public facilities construction fee fund, civic center construction reserve and fiscal year 2018-19 CIP budget for the 910 Kite Negotiator Model Project number 18804.
Motion by Ham, second by Donchuk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Let's hear your verbiage, Tom.
So this is predicated on the approach that Eric mentioned with the goal of getting to you by your budget workshop so that you could potentially consider something for inclusion in the budget. And the recommendation that, for you is to direct staff to continue discussions with the Casa Romantico Cultural Center and Gardens on a potential project to improve the parking lot and for the center to prepare information for city staff review and inclusion in the city council's fiscal year 19 budget workshop planned in May.
So, before you guys make a motion, I just want to be very clear that I think Tim's perception is very real of what the expectation is out there, that we are going to be a substantial partner in this. And I don't think that's a fair expectation to make because from my perspective, I have serious hesitation with making that motion this evening. So I'm not going to be supporting the motion, but it's not because I don't support the CASA. I just think the expectation of our inclusion is going to be way too high.
I would just change the end of that to it not being included in the LTFP, but it comes back to a future, excuse me, it comes back to a future budget or council meeting?
You said not to include it in the CIP budget, but to come back as a separate council meeting.
As a separate council meeting so that we can hear what the agreement is and look at, at the entire thing if we're going to be modifying it. So that's all, I just would not include it in the LTFP.
So, but my understanding from whoever presented it, it's going through design review, it's going through planning commission. Did I hear that?
No, I didn't hear that at all.
Not yet. That would be only, that would come later if there's agreement on a project.
On a project.
We're in the lead-up to that potential.
It feels like we're talking about exactly the same thing, just we get there from different directions. So to be super clear, Tom, is based on your motion, walk us through how this would come back to the council and then proceed through the planning stages.
So, my crystal ball would be that the Casa Romantica sometime late April, early May the latest would, and we would be, you know, discussing, coordinating with them. They would have information on, on a concept that they had their team put together with an estimate. We would start talking about, is that realistic? Does that seem like a work? What are the concerns? But most importantly, have a reasonable budgetary number. And I think the plan would be in your budget workshop is to have that as a recommendation, even with potentially on, I'll talk with Eric, if we have a cost share or at least, you know, what the number is and what are legitimate funding sources your council could use for a match and have that discussion at the budget workshop. And depending on the direction, on approval to move forward or the next steps on a, on a more specific negotiation of the change to the lease agreement is, is have a number included in the budget and then work through those details. And then, only then, once we have an amendment to the agreement and agree upon cost and who does what, then the doing starts getting done in terms of an application package that the CASA would start working on for submittal to start these review processes that I mentioned. That's how we envision it at this point.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead, Eric.
No, I'm sorry. If I may, this is all predicated on getting something from the CASA in a timely manner, which I've already had a discussion with Baronika last week because we'll be printing the budget, the proposed budget, you know, the end of April, early May. And so, you know, the sooner we can get a dollar amount identified that can be brought forward to the council for discussion, if we are unable to meet that window, then I would suspect that we would have to come back to council at a separate meeting to agendize it as a staff report and have council deliberate separately on that. However-
Are we able to even consider it when it's not here at the municipal?
Right now, you're just giving direction. You're not taking formal action on anything. You're not funding anything. It's just seeking direction because to Councilmember Doncheck's point, you know, the CASA is about ready to spend some money on a design and, you know, they, they voiced a, a want to have some type of cost-sharing mechanism. We don't know what that is. We're looking for unrestricted funding to provide that support rather than, we're looking for restricted funding, i.e. the Clean Ocean Fund versus unrestricted general fund monies because there are a laundry list of other things for that as well. And so, you know, Clean Ocean was one nexus that had a nexus to fund a portion of this. But I'll leave it at that and stand to answer any questions.
I have an idea if, if we added this to the beginning of, of Tom's recommendation and we added something to the sense with the understanding that the portion of city funding, if any, is to be determined, then we do that. In other words, we're just giving direction for them to start, give us a number and a budget as to what we can look at to determine whether we're going to fund it at all or what portion we plan to fund it. But we're not doing anything until we know what we're talking about. I'm not going to vote on picking a poke. I'm not going to vote on something that's, you know, inside an empty brown bag. I need to know what we're talking about, what we're going to be doing and what this is going to cost.
I just feel like we're skipping some major steps here by bringing it to the LTFP.
I think this is simply a clear declaration of interest.
Yeah.
Listen, we haven't talked about any amounts.
It could be done outside the L.
We haven't, aren't committed anything. No one can hold our feet to the fire here. But are we going to declare our interest in doing this? Is this something that conceptually would like to walk down? Or conceptually, do we find that it is outside the purview of this council and our budget and that we probably shouldn't even walk down this path? I could vote on that tonight. I could vote on that. I, I think-
I'll make the motion then with the language that was suggested by Councilmember Schwartz. Would you read it again, please?
Sure. With the understanding that the portion of city funding, if any, is to be determined at a future time.
Okay. That we direct staff to work with Casa Romantica to secure designs and cost estimates as, in a timely fashion to coincide with the budget workshop in May or April?
May.
Uh, May.
In May. And with the under, that's the motion, with the understanding that this is a conversation that's going on and that, that there's no decisions being made this evening.
And I'll second that.
Before we go to vote, I just want some more discussion. Steve, I like your addition and I look forward to the discussion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Donchuk, second by Schwartz. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Passes 3-2.
Thank you.
Brian Brower, IT manager. I'm here to present to you the 2010 update to the IT strategic plan. The IT strategic plan is the city's roadmap for all projects that are technology-related and we use this to align technology resources with departmental goals and priorities. The plan was first developed in 2015 and since then, the last three years, we've brought an update each year to, to reflect different advancements in technology and evolving business needs for the city. Within the plan, there's a listing of completed projects and initiatives that have been born out of the plan in the last three years. At this point, we've completed 20 of those projects and some, some recent highlights are the recreation management software system that we brought online in November. We recently finished construction on our data center improvements and we're getting ready to complete the move into there. We've upgraded some cabling citywide. We've invested a lot in our GIS system, making it more robust. And we've also successfully pushed out some cybersecurity technology training to all of our staff over the last couple of years. That's been very successful. We currently have a number of projects underway, really a lot of projects. It's, it's, the number of projects is unprecedented as long as I've been involved in IT here at the city. We have 17 strategic projects that are underway and budgeted in the current fiscal year, which we're working on right now. And these are in varying degrees of completion. Some are still in the planning phases, others are very close to becoming members of the completed list. Some highlights include the IT improvements we've made recently. We have a network infrastructure upgrade that's nearly complete. We're getting ready to install our new storage systems and we have some other security and business continuity projects that are underway right now as well. We're getting ready to award the contract on a new telephone system that'll be used citywide. We'll be bringing that to the council next month. We're also, we just closed the opening period on an RFP for proposals for a legislative management system. This is going to greatly modernize the way the city clerk does business. There's a lot of ancillary projects that go with that, so we're excited to get that underway. And then in the next fiscal year, we're going to be bringing eight projects through the budget process in the coming months. One of those is going to be an upgrade to our permitting and licensing system that's used throughout community development and engineering. And also, we're going to take a look at our current electronic document management system and see if we can make some recommendations for improvement there. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
I'll just be very brief. One thing I wanted to say is, you know, Brian's IT team has done an amazing job of keeping the city of San Clemente on the forefront of technology. I've been to other cities and talking to them recently and when they hear where we're at, whereas they're still two to three years behind us, it makes me feel good that, you know, the city is doing its best to be on the forefront. And all of these initiatives and projects always have the goal of providing better business services for the community and our customers. And so, I just want to commend Brian and his team. They've done a great job.
Thank you.
So how, how tight was the bid on for the phones? What was the spread?
The spread on the phones, because we haven't officially brought the recommendation, I don't know if I want to give exact numbers, but it ranged greatly and we'll bring that to you. We'll bring a listing of all the, the proposed costs when we, when we bring it to you.
I just hung the IT department with Steve and I. He just sat there way ahead of their people. We're cutting out there.
Right where we need to be.
I'm just kidding. Look at yous over there.
Hey, I, I still have some DOS programs I can use.
You know, Brian, I have to commend you in, during your tenure in the, as head of our IT, we've had massive upgrades in, you know, the website, the functionality of all the different systems we do. It's been, it's been great.
Thank you.
We want to commend you for all your good work and I think we're getting to the point where, and it's just like I'd mentioned before, I think our residents are getting used to a higher level of service and expectation, so we're hopefully ahead of the curve on this one.
Thank you.
I'll move, make the motion. Okay. I move that we accept the information technology strategic plan update and direct staff to bring the recommended fiscal year 2018-19 projects and initiatives forward through the budget process.
Motion by Doncheck, second by Ward. All those in favor? Aye. We are in oral communications part two.
Hopefully.
Oh, no, no, we're not yet. Questions from the council?
Yes, we are.
Kathy?
No.
Chris? Steve? Lori?
I'm like, looks like she's got more cards.
Is there more?
I just wanted to bring up the next steps.
Oh, next steps? Okay.
That's it. Just so that you know that this is what's coming, the budget workshop on Monday, May 21st. We've been talking about that. And then the budget adoption is on Tuesday, June 5th, so I just wanted to make sure.